Six o'clock, call the meeting to order. Go ahead and take role.
Walters. Walters?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
DeVorak?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Star Chat?
Here.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. And take a motion, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel? I think I froze. Try that again, Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Star Chat?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is public comments. It's time, place for comments for any item other than those that are in a public hearing. I'm going to ask the clerk if anybody has submitted their name.
Yes, I had one submit their name, but they do not appear to be on the call.
Okay, if they happen to pop back in, why don't you let me know and we'll try and come back to them.
Okay.
Do you know what it is about?
Yeah. So we'll see if she, we'll see if she got, dials in and if she doesn't, we'll all bring it up at the end.
Okay.
Next item, public hearing. It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing on the proposed vacation of a 50-foot buffer easement and a 20-foot surface water flowage easement in Big Creek Technology Campus Platte III. Ask the clerk when the notice is published.
In twelve.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
Great. I'll like staff to go ahead and provide a report.
This is Kathleen. I guess I can do that. These are two easements that were platted with Big Creek Technology Campus Platte III that would be on the lot that is being replatted as part of Big Creek Technology Campus Platte IV, which has gone to P and Z and will be coming to city council. You know, whatever the, all the legal documents are in order. So we'd ask you to proceed with the public hearing, but we are going to propose that you wait until the third reading until after the final plat for Platte IV has been approved. These are easements that will not be needed once the other plat is approved.
Any questions for Kathleen? Is there anyone on the phone who wishes to be heard for, heard for or against the vacation of these easements? Hearing none or seeing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Star Chat?
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh, sorry. Motion carries. Next item, first reading of ordinance two, one, two, twenty, dash thirteen hundred on the vacation of a 50-foot buffer easement and a 20-foot surface water flowage easement in Big Creek Technology Campus Platte III. Need a motion, please.
So moved.
Questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, please.
Star Chat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is consent agenda. Any emotion, please?
If we could, I'd like to pull J.
Okay. Need a motion on the consent less J?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, discussions? Roll call, please. Oh, go ahead.
About not, not to, to move it up or anything, but just H. And I assume somebody's going to talk to that later on, but just curious on how that works.
Yeah.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Star Chat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is item J from the consent agenda. Through forty-eight month lease with Ruon for 2021 police patrol vehicle in the amount of sixty-two thousand, four hundred, fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents payable annually at fifteen thousand, five hundred, thirty dollars and sixteen cents, which was budgeted for fiscal year twenty-one. Ron, since you pulled it, I'll call on you.
Okay, well, I was just wondering why. I read, read the memo and I appreciate the memo and everything it says, but do we really need, really need a Silverado pickup truck? For the police?
I believe adding that to the fleet, we could use it in a lot of different ways for a lot of years, including moving, moving our trailer around, hauling equipment. If we have a bigger case, it would be for evidence. Currently, the Dodge vehicles we have as well don't sit up very high and in the winter, they're very difficult to get around, even with the all-wheel drive. It would also be a benefit to look into. Just to try out a Chevy and see what they have to offer. Typically departments, either Tahoe or the Silverado.
Okay, well, my, my big concern is, is right now, the way things are and as tight as, as tight as money is, and I, I anticipate it's only going to get worse. And this is a big change, something we've never had in town. And I think that when this comes on, there's going to be a lot of questions asked and a lot of wondering why we've gone to a pickup truck. Are you, are you planning on using it every day and?
Yep, it'd be in the patrol rotation with the Durango as well, would be the two main patrol vehicles.
Well, I, I know from experience that driving a four-wheel drive pickup around is a lot more expensive than driving a regular car because I have one.
Yep, but the, any police vehicle, it's going to have a different engine, that sort of thing. They all will get about the same gas mileage, even as those Dodge Chargers. In fact, it might even be a little bit better. Those Chargers do not do very well with fuel. And the vehicle itself is actually, I think, right at a thousand dollars difference from the Durango we had purchased. I don't have the exact number in front of me, though.
Thousand dollars over the course of a year?
No, the total price for the state bid price. This is all going to be a state bid pricing, just like we do at our vehicles.
So I think that helps, Jeremy. You're saying that the, the net difference is only a thousand dollars on what the charger would be that you're replacing if we just went with the same model.
Correct.
Ron, your point, and, and I think that you may, just some words of wisdom, Jeremy, this is maybe a visceral change more than it is a substantive one. So just maybe getting ahead of that makes sense, but that would be my only comment. If it's, if it's a thousand dollars difference right out over three years, I don't think that is a, is a huge factor, but I think good, good to pull it and talk through it like this, Ron.
Yeah, I, I just, I just have my doubts that, you know, that we're, I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's genuinely needed and we're going to use it, but what's, the city already owns how many pickup trucks? I know police doesn't own one, but the city owns several. And if it's from, I, I would think we could find time during the day for one of those to move our speed trailer around.
And we've had to use those in the past as well. The other alternatives really would be if we did another Dodge Durango. And then Ford also has an interceptor as well. That's about, I think they're sitting at seven or eight thousand dollars more in pricing than the Chevy and Dodge are more comparable. The police vehicles at state bid pricing.
So either way, we're going to have to, we're getting, we're budgeted to get a new vehicle, no matter what. Ron, you're, you're concerned about the perception of a, a truck. Comparatively, just because there's a change, it's something that looks different, it'll probably stand out more, but it's justifiable. But I understand what you're saying.
It's, it's, if it's a Silverado, is it a four-door Silverado?
Yep.
You have people to put in the back, right? Got a room.
Yeah, that was, that was going to be my next question. Thank you, Dave. And, you know, I didn't think you could get one for that price, but.
State bid pricing is pretty good.
Okay. Any other questions for chief on this one? Chelsea, did you have anything else to add on that?
Nope.
I need a motion on J, please.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Star Chat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, new business. Under business items, item A, appointment of a person is District Three, which is the town square and Deer Haven representative of NCG, ending twelve thirty-one of twenty. Chelsea, I'll call over on you, I think.
At our last neighborhood citizens group, we kind of identified some areas in town that needed representation. And Deer Haven was one of those neighborhoods. We put out something on our website saying we were looking for applications for a representative from that neighborhood. We did receive two applications. I can tell you both applications were female, so there's really no gender balance determination that would need to be made between the two. We received Alyssa's application on the sixteenth. And we received Kelly's application on the eighteenth of June.
So would your recommendation be just to go with the first one? Since based on the timelines, all things being equal at this point?
Yeah, I have a hard time making a recommendation. It, you know, it's so hard because we are always looking for volunteers. And you hate to get two qualified volunteers for one role, but if the council would pick one, we will certainly keep the other person in mind for future board and commission openings.
Absolutely. Can we have a co, can we? I mean, is there a way to accomplish this with a dual role or is that go against all of our? Other, have we ever had two, two people apply for it? Because I, you know, there's strength in numbers and one person can't do it all. I don't know. There's just a thought here, right? You have somebody to assist and somebody to lead or vice versa.
Yep, we do have a couple of neighborhoods with dual representation. We did talk about at our last meeting, just having one representative per neighborhood. But there are two neighborhoods that yes, do have dual representation currently.
Missed the memo on that one, sorry that we talked about it.
Okay.
Well, that was kind of my thoughts that it's, we usually have a hard time getting volunteers to step forward for things like this. We have two. I think it's, it'd be nice if we could use both of them. I don't know if that, if that upsets the balance of neighborhoods. I don't know.
That is up to the council. You guys have final say. So if you would like to do that, we can proceed with that. I, we're trying to get people on staggering terms. So if you're going to do that, it might be nice to stagger those two representatives so that we don't have, you know, both of them falling off in the same year. Jenny, what, do our terms end the end of this year and then the end of next year?
Correct. We have five representatives that would expire this year and five with the appointment of Cory Vanderlees for seven, we would have five that would expire in 2021. So essentially, if you do two people, you would have eleven people on the neighborhood citizen group. So really, it wouldn't matter. It would be staggered at that point, anyway.
So they both fill the same term is what you're saying?
Meaning that it wouldn't matter which one you picked for the term. I think it's a good idea to separate the two. In that way, if one decides not to rerun, you still have representation in that neighborhood.
Got it. So if you'd like to appoint both, go ahead and appoint both and we could reach out to both of them and see what term they would like to serve. Maybe one wants to do a short term and the other wants to do a longer term.
Do we have any other openings on any boards or commissions right now or are we full up? I can't remember.
Do we still have an opening on the library board?
We did fill that one.
Okay.
Okay, we filled that. Okay, that was the one I was thinking. I couldn't remember. I just going to, if there was an option there, just extend that one, too. Yeah, whatever you guys want to do. I kind of, I don't want to go against what we set as a precedent. I'm with Ron. I really hate turning back a volunteer applicant, but I also don't want to go against what we're, what our precedent is with that. So I'd be interested in what others think about it.
Well, and also, I'm not familiar with either one of these ladies. I mean, their, their applications and resumes are, as you will, are, are both solid. So I, I don't know. I wouldn't know how to make a choice. I would have to rely on you, younger, wiser council members.
Yeah, I think since we don't, you know, I don't think we have anything set that says we can only have one per neighborhood. And again, when you have people that express interest in this kind of thing, you do hate to kind of turn them away. I think, you know, we're kind of getting some more parameters, governance, whatever, around this group by having, you know, set terms, staggering terms, things like that. So I would lean towards, you know, if they're both interested, appointing both of them, seeing if we can get their terms to stagger. And, you know, as we continue to evolve with that neighborhood citizens group, determine, you know, in the future, at some point in the future, do we limit it to one? You know, if we have more things to, you know, officially vote on, maybe just, you know, figure out who the voting member would be, things like that. But I think at this point, you know, some of the momentum is still building there. So I think at, at the point we're at right now, I don't think it would hurt to have two people.
Is that your motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to appoint both of them.
Second.
Perfect. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Star Chat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Before we move on, I'd like to say that what little I've heard about this organization, I've heard some good things, and it doesn't seem like they're only representing their own neighborhoods or saying good things about the city as a whole and, and spreading the word to people who maybe aren't so enthused with what's been happening lately. And it, and it's, it feels good to have some spokesmen out there. So I'd like to express my appreciation to the group.
I would echo that as well. Yeah, they're a valuable group and help then pass on the, the messaging and knowing that there are some changes we've been going through, but helping make sure that facts have been shared and communicated and helping out with that kind of bridge between us and everybody else.
Yeah, I was going to say my comments till the end, but I agree with all of that. I think whatever we can do to better communicate and, and I think this has been, been that, I mean, it's communication and sort of appreciates it different, different ways based on different neighborhoods. And I just love the, the connectedness that, that's offered this. I'm, I'm super excited to finally get the Smart Vanderlees affiliated with the city. Huge stuff in the right direction, but you know, I miss going to these meetings and talking to Mandy and love to see what they're doing both. When it, when it supports what we're doing and sometimes when it's at odds. Anything we can do to get that, that information out there, I think is, is upholding our job.
Okay, next item, Quickstar. First item under Quickstar Resolution twenty twenty seventy-four, proving the preliminary plat for QuickTrip number one zero eight nine. Who is speaking to this tonight?
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Wade Dumond with QuickTrip, Quickstar out of La Crosse, Wisconsin. And we've been working pretty closely with your staff over the last few months and we're very thankful that they put all kinds of time into it. It's been a, been a challenging one at times, but I can sure go through a lot of the information. I, I know it's all in the packet that you guys have probably already looked through. I mentioned a couple of things. We have been working with the DOT as well on the access point onto Bridge, as well as the city just on the access points and some of the improvements on Parker. We'll be installing some medians there to control the traffic on the, the access point on Bridge as well as the first access point, the southerly access point on Parker to limit those to a right in, right out with the full access being further north. So that it doesn't interfere with the stacking into the proposed signalized intersection at Parker and Bridge. So the stacking for that left turn lane won't be an issue with the access points. We do propose a significant amount of buffering when we're up against some residential and you can see that on the landscape plan, which is almost the last date. And yeah, there's a whole bunch of details we could go into. I'm just not sure how deep you'd like me to dive, but I'm sure available for questions or I could keep going.
See, if you want to just kind of hit the high points and then we can kind of start down our various resolutions we have. And if people have questions, we can ask questions then. How's that?
Okay. I'll hit a few more of the high points. The, the city does have a lift station down in the southwest corner and we're going to be putting a new fence around that, plus providing an access easement that'll work a little bit differently, but it'll be, it'll, it'll function very well. We also have a pond at the southerly end. That's the lowest spot of the property to reduce the flows from the, the property. We have a seventy-three hundred square foot building. My guess is most of you have probably seen some of the buildings we have in the Des Moines area. It's going to be the exact same building with the, the same product mix on the inside. Sometimes depending on local preference, the, the store leaders can have different products in there if there's demand. So just in case anybody wants to know that. We also have a detached bar wash opening on the north side. And we are limiting the hours on that from seven to 10 p.m. so that there's no issues with noise to the neighbors. And we've got a trail that we're building along the, the south side there as well that eventually, my understanding is the plan, it, it'll tie into the trail on the Army Corps land. The Army Corps also has reviewed the drainage report because we do have some stormwater that's historically gone straight across the property that enters their land and they've reviewed that and they're okay with it. What else? We do have all of our buildings, we, the facilities we construct to a lead accredited standard. We don't get the, the actual certificates anymore because they're rather expensive, but we still use that process on all of our stores. We do have a bike rack planned. We're anticipating there's going to be a pretty good amount of pedestrian traffic. We're anticipating as well as we got picnic table with some landscape around it that would tie right into the sidewalk along Parker. Yeah, I'll leave it at that and answer any questions that you might have.
This is Amy. I'll jump in. Kathleen and I have gone through all the documentation. She obviously has gone through the engineering with her, with the Snyder and Associates people and all the documentation and everything is in order. And if you choose to, if you decide to move ahead, you could combine resolutions, one, be one through four should be two thousand and twenty, twenty seventy-four through seventy-seven, all in one motion if you chose to do so.
Um, so that's, thanks, Amy. That's good. I'll be honest, it, it does, I can't believe I'm defending government bureaucracy, but it does make me a little bit nervous to, to do preliminary final construction and site plan all in one meeting. Just because of the, you know, potential for people not being aware of some of these changes and, and so that makes me nervous. Have, have we heard anything particularly from people in Bridgeview on anything? I didn't hear anything in the P and Z meeting, but I don't know if we've gotten much in the way of feedback on, on any concerns.
Not through City Hall.
No.
And, and none of these items that are before you tonight are things that would require a public hearing? So just keep that in mind, too. The preliminary plat, a final plat, construction drawings and the site plan don't require any public hearing by law.
And I, that's kind of what I'm concerned, right? The, the, the notice could not have, have gotten out. Again, I don't, you know, I'm, to be honest, I'm not super familiar with a ton of Quickstars, but I, I remember a lot of good things and and I'm excited and I'll get to some other points down the road. I just want to be super transparent and, and allow as much opportunity as we can. So all of a sudden, you know, dirt starts getting moved and, and people don't know what it is. Again, I, this is to that extent, not been a, you know, a secret. I think that this has been out there a lot. And so I just, but in terms of formal progression, going through these all together makes me nervous. But I, I know staff's done a ton of work and given the nature of, of how this is being addressed, probably not a concerning particular instance of going through these motions. In fact, I'm inclined to, to go along with all of them in the way that you outlined, Amy, but I just wanted to make sure we didn't have anything. And Jenny, if you're saying we haven't gotten anything through City Hall, that's, that's helpful. Or I hope it's helpful, anyway.
Wade, this is Dave DeVorak. Like, thank you for, first of all, choosing Polk City, right? Because there's competition out there. It seems like there's a lot, lot of, you guys are doing really well and appreciate that. With, to Rob's point, if we did each of these separately, we would essentially be taking this how many more weeks out than probably is needed? Or?
It'll all be tonight. I mean, they're all on your agenda tonight.
We would just do them individually and take an extra three minutes to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. And yeah, I knew, I knew they were, but I was just, I understand. Okay. Well, appreciate.
I mean, we, I wasn't saying to stretch this out. I don't want to do that. The fact that we're out having this meeting, we did have the P and Z. You know, it's, it's in the idea of, of this being developed as it is, it's a new idea to a lot of people. So we haven't gotten much feedback, probably squashes my concern a lot of it, anyway.
I have actually had a fair number of conversations with residents down in that neighborhood. And it's all been positive. So I've, you know, when I first heard a, a gas station going there, I would, I had some initial concern, but after hearing the, the feedback from those neighbors, they're all very excited to have something nearby them. And I think it, I think it fits.
Jeff, I would echo the same comments that I've heard from people as well. I've heard nothing but positive all across the board.
Thank you, guys. Jeff, that's good to hear because I haven't heard much of anything one way or the other. At the P and Z meeting last Monday night, there was talk of, of connecting to the Neil Smith Trail down there. And Commissioner Hankins talked about it and he is an avid biker and he thought that it would be, not only be good for the bikers, but it would also be good for business, that. bikers like their Gatorade and things like that. And for them to have some access off of the Neil Smith Trail would be a be a plus for everybody. I just wonder if that's something that the city is going to have to foot the bill for, or will uh, Quick Star help us with that?
Wouldn't that all be on core property at that point, once, once we get west of the Quick Star property?
It is.
Yeah. It's on core property. Has anyone had any conversation with the Saylorville office, in particular Jeff Rose or or Derek?
We plan to talk to them about it. Um, it's on our list of things, but yeah, we.
You you got some some design logistics that could be interesting with the the slopes and of course, the Corps of Engineers has been trying to restore that as a uh, ecological natural resources feature in that area. So we probably should get ahead of that sooner than later so that they understand what our request is because as we all know, it's going to take time for them to say yes, no, or maybe. I mean, I I think Jeff Rose and the Saylorville staff would be amenable to it, but they have to take that request back to Rock Island. So there, there is a process that we all know.
I would agree with that. And I I think you're being generous by saying they're trying to do anything. Sooner we can get that ball rolling, the better. And and I would just say, I don't know, um, Mr. Dumont, if we have anybody that that is on corporate, but um, having heard good things from Quick Star, I'm I'm optimistic that this store could be a a good corporate citizen. Um, Casey's kind of is, come and go is not at all. So uh, whatever you can do to uh, be involved in the community or encourage uh, the business side of this when everything is up and running, uh, that would be well served in the long term, I think.
Thank you for that information. Yeah, we, we do tend to really encourage um, participation by staff in community events and uh, we even have in certain cities, there's, they're quite active. So I'm anticipating that will reflect here as well.
Good to hear. Um, okay, so Amy, keep me honest if I'm doing this right. I'll make a motion to approve Resolutions twenty twenty seventy-four through seventy-seven.
That's correct.
Second.
Further discussion, questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Warwick?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Or Chat?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Thanks, guys.
Thank you all.
Next item, Resolution twenty twenty dash seventy-three, approving the final plat of Deer Haven Plat Three. Kathleen, Chelsea, one of you on a certain?
Yeah, I can speak to this, Mayor. Uh, this is a four lot plat uh, with a outlot that would go to the city as part of their park land. Um, the file plat is in front of you. Uh, construction has been completed and uh, is ready for acceptance. Grass, we're kind of waiting on the grass to grow. All the public improvements have been installed and uh, we have no issues with the final plat. Um, all the legal documents have been provided. Uh, the only, I guess, outstanding issue is that there's a letter from the developer requesting a waiver of the required sidewalk bond. So other than that, it's good to go from our perspective. This plat's kind of been looming out there for quite some time until they did finish the construction this earlier this year.
Any questions for Kathleen? If not, can I get a motion?
It'd be good to get clarification as to whether you're going to waive the sidewalk bond per the developer's request or if you're going to require it, which would then be a subject to. I think Jim Campy's on the line to speak to the waiver.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for him on that?
I do see Jim on. Jim, do you have anything you want to add on that?
Yeah, I I I think I explained it in the letter. I appreciate your attention to it. Thank you. You know, we've got money coming for Deer Havens. So I, it seems like it's an extra charge to put cash in at this point. When in fact, if there were an issue in the future, it could be offset. So I I'm just suggesting that. So ask me to consider it.
I am fine with waiving the sidewalk bond requirement, knowing that the four property owners will be required to install sidewalk with their building permits.
Anybody want to make a motion on this one?
Yeah, no, no issue for me. Just that if if we're not doing anything that impedes the connectivity of our sidewalks and and putting those in as they get developed. So I'll go ahead and make a motion uh, approving Resolution twenty twenty seventy-three.
Second. Questions, comments, discussion?
As long as, so help me understand this. There's going to be sidewalks there and they'll put them in when the lots are built on. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I can live with that.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
DeVorek? Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Is that the background?
I'm sorry.
Is that big creek in the background where he said?
Yeah.
That's a big one.
Yeah, with 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 the palm trees and everything, right?
Exactly. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Next item, Resolution twenty twenty dash seventy-two, awarding general obligation street improvement bond series twenty twenty. Chelsea, I think this is yours.
I'm going to hand it over to Matt Stoffel, actually, who is on the call.
I didn't see him on.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so we sent over the debulation of bids. I don't know, Jenny, if you're able to share that. No. So today the city took bids on one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars um, of general obligation street improvement bonds. And the city received six bids, five electronic and one fax bid. The winning bidder was um, or the low bid was from U M B Bank out of Kansas City, Missouri. And they bid a one point zero zero two nine percent. So the net interest cost was ninety-nine thousand sixty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. The next best bidder, what we call the cover bid, was uh, one point oh eight percent out of Bankers Bank out of Madison, Wisconsin. So we were very, very happy with the bids and how they came in, uh, very competitive. Uh, the market is back to to really where it was in early um, early March, kind of before the the pandemic really took hold and interest rates went up almost two percent um, in March and have since come back down. So we're, we're very pleased um, with how these came in. The Moody's did uh, rate these bonds a double A three, so they affirmed your double A three rating. So the city had a credit call with Moody's on June second and that was uh, made public on June sixteenth. And so I guess I'll stop there and and ask if there's any questions. So if there's no questions, B F M would would make a formal recommendation to award the one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar general obligation street improvement bond series twenty twenty to U M B Bank N A out of Kansas City, Missouri.
I guess I'll, I'll take this opportunity to maybe make a sideways point here since we have Matt, the expert on here and and I've heard some chatter, particularly from some folks who don't like their new Waterville. Could you uh, expand a little bit on that triple A rating on the the scale, what that means? A little bit, Matt?
Yeah, so the double A three um, is, so they rate, they rate bonds on a scale Moody's Investor Services does. So the the highest rating you can get is a, is a triple A. And then one notch below that is a, is a double A one, two notches below that is a double A two and three notches below that is a double A three. There's um, and then once you go from double A three, it goes down to A one, A two, A three, and then it goes B double A one, B double A two. And so anything above an A three is considered investment grade. So really, there was a lot of strengths. Uh, I've got your credit report here. Some of the strengths that they highlight for the city are just the proximity to a major metro area. Very strong operating reserves and a low debt and pension burden. Some of the credit challenges that they note for for Polk City is just a small tax base. So they just consider you a relatively small tax base. And then um, historically, in your audits in twenty nineteen, it still shows that local auction sales tax makes up a big portion of your revenues. So your reliance on sales tax as a portion. Um, and I think that will correct itself as you move into have an audit for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and so forth, but they did note that in the, in the audit for, or in the, in the rating. So double A three is, I would say, very good for your size community. Des Moines, I think, is is rated a double A two. Uh, Johnston um, is a double A one. Just for some comparisons, Altoona is an A one, so a step below you. Um, they used to be a double A three. So about where we would expect your community to be. Does that answer your question?
It it does, and and I appreciate you outlining me in that way. And just to expand on the point to people who I know probably aren't listening, but um, the controllables speak well to our financials and the minor detractions we do have are are what I would call uncontrollable factors. So um,
Yeah, and and for a double A three credit today, you priced really well, like seventeen basis points above a triple A credit. So, you know, the difference between where you, the double A three, where you're at and if you would have priced on the triple A scale for today, the difference was seventeen basis points, so point one seven percent.
Right, and uh, you know, uh, interest cost of ninety-nine thousand dollars on close to two million dollars worth of needed street improvements, I think, is is money well spent. So thanks for, thanks for going a little bit further on that and and letting me grandstand a little bit, Matt. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Since I'm not used to these big numbers, tell me how, how long will it take us to pay this off? Do we know?
Yeah, this is structured over ten years, so it'll be paid off by twenty thirty.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Ron, I I think you recall, but this project was originally closer to two point eight million dollars. And we were looking at a fifteen-year loan um, because the the bids came in so good with the county, we were able to get that down to a ten-year.
I think that's fantastic.
You'll still be here, Ron.
Well, let's hope. I don't, I doubt that I might not be sitting in this chair, but I hope I'm still here.
Side, I think this is great. Um, one percent, you know, money is amazing. It is a great call on on on, you know, Chelsea's work and everybody else's um, the opportunity to get this done. It's a really, really good opportunity and a good investment for the the city and I'm excited that they came back so well.
Yeah, a great, a great project. And I've heard lots, lots and lots of positive things about it. Especially now that the construction's done. Yeah.
Can I get a motion on twenty twenty seventy-two if there's no other comments?
So moved.
Second. Do we have to special uh, say who specifically we are giving the loan to? Or the, or is that in the, I don't have it up?
We will put the low bidder in the resolution, Dave.
It will be put in the resolution.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments then? Roll call, please.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Or Chat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Perfect. Motion carries. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Next item, approved Snyder and Associates April twenty twenty services invoice in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Take a motion, please.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Or Chat? Walters?
I'm staying.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, second reading, reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash one one zero zero, rezoning foot for, gosh, rezoning fourteen point six zero acres to R two A. Need a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Or Chat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash twelve hundred, rezoning thirty-four point one six acres to C two. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Or Chat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, discuss timing of opening city facilities and resuming in-person meetings. Chelsea, I'll let you go.
Thank you. I'd like to involve the council in a discussion tonight um, regarding reopening city facilities and um, coming back to in-person council meetings and then boards and commissions. So I put together a little memo for the council's consideration tonight with some talking points, but I'd really like to stay on target of reopening City Hall for July sixth. Knowing we do have a pretty good barrier up at City Hall, um, now in the city clerk's office. That would be after the fourth of July holiday weekend. Uh, that would be Monday, July sixth. Couple of things I'd like to do, um, and this is come at the suggestion of other people who are working on a reopening plan. I'd like to take all the chairs away at City Hall so that the public cannot come in and and sit. And then we would need to probably provide some sort of um, like spacers on the floor, um, in case we had multiple people in City Hall at one time. Day-to-day meetings, we would still try to hold those um, via phone or video if possible. Some meetings we would need to have in person and we would definitely make those a priority, but if it could be done by phone call or Zoom video, we certainly would do that. We will encourage people to wear masks. We won't require them to wear masks. Um, I, that's what a lot of other cities are doing is making a strong recommendation to wear masks and putting a sign on the front door. I'd like to still keep the police, fire, public works facilities closed. I'd like to have one entry point for the public coming into city facilities and that would be City Hall. That's not to say somebody comes in and needs something from a police officer. We can have um, someone from the police department come over to City Hall and meet them. And try to have a conversation with them over here. Do you guys have questions, concerns um, about reopening city facilities though, and our, our timeline that we have for that?
The only thing I would say is, is rely on the, on the staff in there, the ones that are going to be there doing, and if they're comfortable, then. And if they're comfortable, then I'm fine with it, but I think we need to make sure they're comfortable with it.
My point exactly, Ron. I was gonna say the same thing. I hate to make decisions for those that are on the front line, so to speak. So it's collaborative decision with, you know, Chelsea being the leader in that regard. Taking her recommendation is no problem for me.
And I think you also need to remain flexible. If you're saying July 6th, then all of a sudden things spike up again like what you've seen across the country. You know, that, that July 6th isn't necessarily a, certainly a hard stop. But if you have to change it, that we give Chelsea the flexibility to make that change.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. Is there a strategy in case we do see spikes one month, three months, six months, in case we do have to close again? Or recommendation or proclamation comes from the governor to close facilities again?
Yeah, I, I think we would be able to take that approach. I will say, putting up the door and the glass barrier in the city clerk's office has helped us, and we have done that since this pandemic hit. We do have the capability of kind of protecting the staff members, though, in that regard. But absolutely, if, if this spikes up again, we can certainly close. We have been able to do almost everything electronically with the public. So we are still here and able to help them with what they need.
What, one person I'd be interested in hearing from particularly, Jamie, I know how much you love being called on, but I'm gonna call on you anyway because I think that opening your building up probably has the greatest amount of impact on day-to-day contact with people. So I'd be curious your point of view.
So I think my opinion changes daily, hourly.
Yeah.
I, I think for the most part that we are comfortable opening. We are, I, I, we watch those numbers daily to see how Polk County's doing. Today did have the highest number in the last two weeks for Polk County as far as new cases, but it's still not anywhere near where it was. So we did get one more hand sanitizer dispenser in today. The others that we ordered could be January before we get them, and we can't, we can't just stay closed because we're waiting on those. So we, we've taken a lot of precautions. I had a webinar last week on reopening that gave us some more things to think about. So we've ordered a couple of different things to kind of help us get through that. We'll have baskets, like shopping baskets, like at Fairway. When they come in, they will take one of those and anything that they, even if they decide they don't want it, they can put it in that basket, and then we'll have a disposal area up front where we can sanitize them before we put them back. Although the most recent studies are showing that surface contact really is not the main transmitter. We have masks for all of our staff. And we will be limiting the number of people in there by having them make appointments to come into the library.
Well, Jamie, I think what you're doing now is fantastic, because you know I'm using the heck out of it, and I greatly appreciate it. You know, here's a question. If you do open, can I still pick up my books outside?
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I can attest to that, too. That's a service that we've really enjoyed, so we can still use the library, so I appreciate it. Appreciate that work.
Great job. Chelsea, you want to just keep going down the line unless anybody else has anything else to add or anything as far as building openings or particularly library or City Hall?
Yep. I'm done with city facilities, though. If you guys are ready to move on in-person meetings. Okay.
I'm fine with it.
Move on. So boards and commission meetings. I asked Chief Mitchell to come up with a estimate, an estimate for having meetings both in the council chambers and then also the community center. So he put together some figures. That information is for you in the packet. But I think the one thing that we should discuss is if we go back to meetings in the council chambers, we can have seven to eight people in the room. That really limits it to, you know, just the council and probably the city clerk and myself. Still have to require the rest of the staff to call in as well as the public. That is provided a six-foot distance between all people coming to the meetings, and we would not be able to sit at the dais. There'd be three people allowed to sit up there, and then the rest of the council would have to sit throughout the chambers. So there's that piece. I think from Jenny and I's perspective, the community center gives us a little bit more room, but we don't have a projector over there. So there is that issue, and then the community center echoes a little bit more so than City Hall. I think our preference would be to have meetings at City Hall and know that our numbers are gonna be more restricted. We do have some issues with the internet at City Hall. So if we, if we do pursue the in-person meetings, not everybody will be able to zoom in with the participating public and staff. We'd probably just have one computer, and we'd have to project the participants that are on Zoom. We have had issues at City Hall when we have staff meetings, and most of the staff members are participating via Zoom. It's a lot of uploading to the internet. What else? I don't think, I think if the council wants to pursue meeting in, in person again, we're certainly open to that. I, if, if there's council members that still want to participate via Zoom, I think we're respectful of that. It wouldn't be a mandatory decision, but we can certainly talk about it amongst the group. The only other thing, Chelsea, would be because the internet is restricted, I don't believe we would be able to do any live stream, even if we have some of the council and mayor here. So it would still be a recorded video that I would have to upload to the internet after the meeting. Okay.
Well, I think what Jeff said earlier is very pertinent, but we need to watch numbers and see, see where things are going, and if we're gonna err, what they're on the side of safety. And I don't know, I'm not crazy about this, but it seems to be working, these Zoom meetings.
So what, so my, my position as I talked, I think, as we kind of hit on there too, but is to, I'm, I'm with you. I think we have to be, I'd rather be, I'd rather be overreactive than not reactive enough when this is all said and done. And I think the city's done a great job up to this point of, of doing exactly what they needed to do. And I'm, and I appreciate everybody's hard work on that. And so I just think, you know, whether or not it's the first meeting of July, the second meeting of July, or whenever it is, you know, some of these may be game day decisions. You know, we may have to, you know, be prepared to, to, to call an audible, basically, and say, we're gonna change plans that day. You know, again, just watching the news here this afternoon and seeing that you've had twenty-three states that have spiked up higher. And, and obviously, you're seeing outbreaks from Memorial Day, and who knows what you're gonna see after the Fourth of July. So I just think we have to be prepared to, you know, yes, I think ideally we all get back to some in-person meetings, but obviously, they're gonna look different for a long period of time. My question that I had, and I know, Chelsea, I asked you about this earlier, is, and just since Amy's on the call, I, I just want to make sure that we can have in-person meetings and not allow outside, anybody else from the outside just due to the, the setup of our room. So basically, we're saying, we're gonna allow, we're gonna allow in-person meetings, but basically not allow the public. And that's kind of, you know, a little hairy. So I just want to make sure we're okay on doing that, Amy.
Yeah, as long as you have, give the public access in some ways, and as I understand it, you could still be doing that. They'd be able to call in, or they'd be able to zoom in. We provide some way for them to access the meeting.
Yeah.
Number one, but you're all, you also have the advantages in that you have been live streaming it, too, which is over and above what a lot of cities have been doing. So I'm comfortable that you can, that it, we can make it work if you, no matter how you decide to handle it.
Yeah, I just, when you start saying we're gonna have meetings but not allow the public, it's, it, I just want to make sure we're covered on that. I know we're kind of all on new, new ground here right now, but I just wanted to make sure to get your input on that.
You don't, you, you have to allow the public access, the ability to speak. You don't have to have the, give the public the ability to speak like you do at the beginning of meeting, unless it's a public hearing, and then you're by law required to have, to have the ability for them to speak during the public hearing.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I just, like I said, I just want to make sure we're covered on that, since it's a, kind of.
We'll make, you know, however you decide to do it, the setup, so we meet the, the legal requirements.
A lot of confidence in our quarterback and coach, so.
Would you guys like to revisit the discussion at the July 13th meeting? Like, I do think it's important that we keep talking about it. But do we plan to have the July 13th meeting via Zoom? And do, should we go ahead and just leave it on the agenda for that meeting?
I, I like that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. You know, I think if we could go back to normal and have public be there and, you know, things are stabilized, I'd be more inclined to say go forward with pushing to have it in person. I think we gain a little by being together, but it's not like, you know, we get back to where people can come in and sit physically, you know, at our meetings. So I'm, I'm okay with kicking it down the road just a little bit, see where things, you know, evolve and develop in the next few weeks here, and discussing again at our next meeting.
Okay, and then I can provide the council with an update on City Hall reopening at that meeting as well.
In the interim, if we're not gonna be in person on July 13th, is there anything that we can be doing in, in the council chambers to improve the audio, improve internet capacity and capabilities, at least look into it? We've all known for some time that the audio during, during the live stream or during the, the video is not very good. And if we're going to be doing this live in council chambers, you know, are we hooking up to the mic on the ceiling? Are we using a different microphone? There, there's some technological impediments that we have to jump over and get through to, to make that successful for the public.
Took the words right out of my mouth, Jeff.
See if we can get some more bandwidth.
Well, bandwidth, you know.
Different anything.
Yeah, the, the ceiling mic is not conducive to picking up the audio very well. It would, it may be something where we have to just kind of play around, do a, a mock Zoom meeting with someone in the council chamber, someone at home, you know, just kind of play around to figure out logistically what works the best so that, you know, down the road, we don't get in trouble because someone, someone with some sort of impairment or someone that's out for the city doesn't come back at us.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there's a fine line between offering, you know, the incredible amount of work and adjustment that it takes to get on, you know, to get back in the city. But then it just sounds, then it's just like such KI and tough to do, and, you know, the flow and the people hearing it, like you said. So we need to balance them both and make sure that, because this worker is working well. So we can ensure that when we get there, it's just also a real smooth, you know, it's not gonna be smooth because it's unknown territory. But distancing three people and three people, and, you know, it's, it's gonna be rather cluttered anyway. So at some point, we try it, and if it just really doesn't seem to work very well, then we revisit.
So Chelsea, have you been, have you, because I know the last time that I was there that we had a meeting, so we had three of us, and Jenny, maybe you can answer this, but where we actually had three of us that were zooming in. Have you been able to have more than three at this point using the city's wifi or no? Because that was where we got in trouble the last time. We kept getting frozen and kicked off.
It's challenging. It, it cuts in and out like we do for our staff meetings.
Okay.
And I do just kind of want to restate, so, you know, it is tough, kind of tough to say, okay, employees go back to normal, but the council is not going to come back yet. But I just want to, you know, be explicit that we are respectful of, of all the employees. And really, for me, the key thing is making sure that our public has good access to our meetings and can hear us. So, so yeah, like I said, I, I struggle with saying staff get back to work, but council's gonna kick it down the road a little bit. So just clear on the rationale there.
And I also think too, just, just to reiterate, that if, if staff does feel uncomfortable or if there's things that we need to, provisions we need to, you know, actions we need to take, provisions we need to make, or if, you know, heaven forbid, one of your employees gets it, that we've got a game plan real quickly to shut down what needs to be shut down for the period of time that we need to be shut down, and that we don't have to gather this group back together to make that decision, that that decision's able to be made by Chelsea or whoever at the time.
Agree.
Okay, so the plan then is we'll just continue Zoom to July 13th, other boards and commissions as well. And then we'll discuss this at our 13th meeting, planning on opening stuff back up on whatever limited basis that looks like on the 6th of July, unless something changes, and at which time you can make that decision.
That sounds good.
Perfect. All right. Anything else on that from anybody? Okay. Moving on to reports and particulars. So Jenny, did, did we still have somebody on?
Yes, Kathy has joined.
Okay, so we did have one person who did submit a speaker card today. And so Jenny, if you can unmute her and let her speak, and give her name and address for the record. And Kathy, you got about, up to about five minutes to speak.
Kathy, the Flarge Nurse. Oh, sorry. My name is Kathy Kuzelka. I am speaking here today in regards to a petition that the community made to get a pool here in Polk City. Recently, there's been some outrage in Polk City as we are unable to utilize pools with summer, with risks in our surrounding communities. Many people have realized the importance of having a local pool so that our city's children can receive swim lessons and enjoy outdoor summer entertainment locally. So we would like to see you consider and create a plan for getting a pool here in town to bond. I submitted this petition. At the time, there were about five hundred and five signatures. Some things the community spoke about regarding the benefits of having school were summer jobs for teens, tourism, summer entertainment, adding a competitive swimming options for school-aged children, and importantly, swim lessons. Living in an area with so many natural waterways, it's very important that we have a way to teach our youth to be responsible around the water. I realize a pool idea has been voted on a couple times in a bond with the addition of a sports complex. It's been noted by the public that a pool versus a sports complex is something that can be utilized by anyone in the community, from families with very small children to the elderly. I think a bond with a pool only would be the best route to go to get it approved. The community has said that the ideal pool would be similar to the Prairie Ridge Pool in Ankeny. Nothing like extremely flashy, but nothing like too plain to make it a little bit fun for everybody. As you know, voter turnout for the previous bonds were very low for the demographic that may have been more likely to vote in favor of that one. So I would definitely be willing to help out as far as trying to get some better voter turnout. I think just in general, people, like the demographic here is changing. We've got younger families, I think more younger families that would definitely be interested in getting out and voting for this. What do you guys think?
Where were you several years ago? No, I I appreciate the comments. We I remember that time all too well and without getting into specifics. It was like it was it was a very difficult time. We thought we had it pretty much wrapped up as you, you know, it's the demographics changing and the usage and so it's something we need to discuss further. Certainly, I was the biggest proponent of that along with many others in the community. How many years ago was that? I don't remember.
Twenty fifteen on the first one and twenty eleven on the other. Or twenty ten, twenty ten, I'm sorry, twenty ten.
So we still got thirty percent, I believe.
Thirty and thirty both times, basically.
Right, right. So I mean, we're talking about a dramatic change. I'm not saying it can't happen. I'm just saying I appreciate you bringing it back up and it brings back good and bad memories.
Understandably.
Well, I so so Cassie, I think I think what we can do now, so we've got the petition that you put together, we'll keep that on file. And as we continue to work through our plans moving forward and our want lists and can the C I P list that we've got that we've been working on. You know, I think that we continue to continue to have that out there as a discussion topic. And, you know, see where that goes from there.
Go ahead, Rob, but then I'll I'll jump in.
Yeah, I I think we need to go a little bit farther than that. Cassie, if you're still on, I would just point out that I I share Dave's perspective and quite honestly, you know, the the petition signatures are in in rough comparison to the number of pro votes that we had before, so not wanting to repeat history, but a lot of the work that that went into what was the sports complex was a committee that involved multiple entities, not just the city. So if we could replicate something like that, obviously the city, you know, to the extent that it needed to be funded would play a large role in that, but if we could build up a a committee to do some investigating and see what demographics have changed, where it could go, cost, some of those things, I think. You know, listening to to five hundred voices, that that makes sense to me. I'm I was for it, both bond bond issues before and we would, my family would use the heck out of it, but I just want to go into this with eyes wide open and make sure that we're putting this in a position to succeed this time around.
I would agree with that. Cassie, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this forward like this. You know, it it takes work to gather support, put together comprehensive thoughts, you know, lay things out as clearly as you have. So I really appreciate your effort and trying to help serve the community and doing it in a constructive way by gathering some voices and and bringing key thoughts forward. I personally am a huge proponent of having a pool. I, as a council member, have a lot of priorities to juggle and, you know, figure out what, you know, our priorities are as far as what our citizens can pay for. So like I think some of the others just said, it's you know, additional conversations down the road. I wish I could tell you, yes, we can put this on the budget tomorrow. That's that's probably not realistic, but like I said, I just wanted to appreciate or express my appreciation for you bringing this forward in the way that you did.
Yes, I agree. All that needs to take place and I was I was sure it was going to pass last time because of the number of young people in town and and the complaints about not having enough fields and stuff and places for people to practice and participate. And I was dumbfounded when it didn't pass.
Yeah, I I would say the same thing and not to be a naysayer on this topic, because if it came up to vote tomorrow, I'd vote for it in a heartbeat, but it will be some tough sledding to get to get this worked out. And there's a large price tag on a project like this and to prioritize that against some of the other issues that we have, it is a challenge for the council and staff. So I appreciate the effort and I hope that we can make something work like that because yeah, it'd be great. It's just we got to figure out how to do it and like Rob said, Bron said, we've all said, we just got to figure out a way to make it happen. It's probably not going to be tomorrow. It's probably not going to be next year, but if we can try to keep it on the horizon and just chip away, you know, maybe one of these days we can get something like that.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get back into reports and particulars. I'll start at the top. Ron.
Just wanted to talk a little bit about the P and Z meeting and and the hard work they did on the things before them and and decisions were made and questions were asked. We're very fortunate to have a group like that. They're very dedicated and very knowledgeable. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot to say other than I wish I could show myself and show my face in public again, other than just waving out of my truck, but we'll get there eventually.
Jamie, do you have anything else to add? Mandy?
I don't have anything, I don't think.
Jenny?
Yes, sir.
Chelsea?
I have nothing.
Do you want to come back and we'll we'll go around the room and then we'll come back to the food bank thing?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll come back to that.
Okay.
Cool. Kathleen? Must not have anything. Jeff?
Just a couple of things. The Kiwanis in conjunction with Lakeside Fellowship had their pancake breakfast here last weekend. We didn't have quite the numbers we've had in the past, but we still did two hundred and five breakfasts that Saturday morning. So appreciate the efforts of Jim and Jeremy as well as everyone else at Kiwanis that that came out and we appreciate the community to support Kiwanis and the efforts that we do as well as Lakeside Fellowship. It's we appreciate that facility. Also, good to see that the street repairs are wrapping up. I've had a number of great comments, a lot of positivity with that project. Appreciate the, you know, nearly six miles of road that have been resurfaced. It's turned out into a very, very nice project. And again, appreciate all the positivity from the from the residents here in town. And then I'll, I was going to make a comment about the comic cupboard, but if Chelsea is going to talk about that, I won't steal her thunder.
Amy? Nothing. Uh, Chief Zipker?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Dave?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Chief Mitchell?
I was just going to comment on a letter and ask, answer any questions that you might have regarding my council letter about the funds moving forward for the self contained breathing apparatus. We Everyone good on that?
Yep. Yeah.
We had a failed effort with the grants that we applied for due to COVID. We'd like another shot at it next year.
Fingers crossed. Hopefully there's some more federal money that comes available too.
Right on.
Yeah. Anything else?
All I have. Had fun serving up pancakes with Chief Sipker and and the honorable Jeff Walters. So that was fun. That's it.
Thanks, man. Rob?
Um, yeah, sorry, I was having some internet issues apparently. Just to to go back. I'm a little bit disappointed. We we can't have our meetings, I think, in person. I think maintaining six feet of difference. It is probably safe enough to do that. I'm not sure we can tell how big of impact not having public access is having, but I'll I'll be in the minority and respect the majority's opinion on that if we want to be extra cautious. That's all I have.
Jason?
The past week I had the opportunity to talk with Bridget from the chamber on a number of things and I can already tell she's a she's a good resource to have in this town. Um, I see some opportunity going forward for some collaboration between my department and the chamber for some large scale events. So I'm very excited about that prospect. I'll just touch base on one thing here. Last week, Chelsea, Bridget and myself met to talk about the farmer's market on the town square. And we we came to a an agreement that I think all three of us were pretty happy with. So starting July second, going all the way through September tenth, Thursdays, four to seven, like usual, we will see a farmer's market on the square. It's going to look a little different. We decided we were going to kind of minimize vendors and spread them out just a little bit more. And obviously Bridget will have the call on what vendors are there, you know, kind of what's sold and what's not. But I I'm excited for that and I think we're doing it in a in a respectful, safe way. So, yeah, I'm excited. I'll be down there on July second and hope you guys will be too.
Awesome. Thanks, Jason.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could I real quick to Jason, based on Cassie's call earlier, I would I would challenge you to bring as many public private partnerships together as you can over the next years, over the next years, years, whatever the case may be, to help support exactly what, you know, Bridget brought for or Bridges, excuse me, Cassie brought forward. Because that would be the difference. Let's face it, that would be a deal breaker if we're able to get you know, some sort of funding from anything other than a bond issue or a smaller bond issue. So, I mean, that would accelerate it. So that's that's just a challenge to throw out there, Jason.
Absolutely. And you know, when I see that big check from the Dvorak household I'll name the thing after you.
I already took a picture of my check. It's sent over. So you can just direct take it out and take it right out. Yeah, right. Thanks, Jason.
Of course. Thank you.
Anything else, Jason?
Nothing more.
Cool. Yeah, so we're going to talk real quick on this comic cupboard. And then I do have a couple of quick things and then we'll end. So, yeah, regarding H, the resolution you guys approved under consent agenda, setting a public hearing for July thirteenth, obviously there'll be some more conversation that'll come out then. But regarding the C D B G funded project for the comic cupboard, and obviously, as most of you know, that I think I've mentioned the comic cupboard every week for the past several months now. Totally feel the importance for that and see the importance of talking through that. I know Bridget's been actively involved to give her another pat on the back today, but as well as Dixie Beckwith, obviously, who's been a lifelong Pope City resident and then been kind of driving this thing. So, you know, we challenged Chelsea and city staff. We've had some conversations around various projects that could work, maybe would work. Some things could happen, some things couldn't. But the C D B G funded project and this money came up as an opportunity and so Chelsea wrote a grant on it or wrote the paperwork on it. I signed it. And so anyway, so she gets the total credit even though my signature was there. And so there's been some paperwork back and forth and obviously some technicalities that have to be worked through to make this happen. I know Chelsea had meetings with both Bridget and and Dixie, but I just think that this is so awesome. I know there were tears shed when the amount was given of the almost thirty one thousand dollars that's going to go towards the comic cupboard because of this. And so I think after the grant was awarded, it was like, okay, now the real work begins. And I think that through partnership, I think that we've worked out, Chelsea, you guys worked out with Fairway and some other things. I think this is going to be great. You're going to be seeing a lot more coming out about this. I'm probably not doing it anywhere near the amount of justice and the amount of good that this thirty one thousand dollars is going to do for the people that truly need it in our community right now. And I'm just so excited about this. So Chelsea, what what am I missing on this front?
I think it's a great opportunity. C D B G is not something our community would typically be able to apply for because we don't have a high enough L M I percentage in town. They relaxed their rules and regulation and we got wind of an opportunity to apply for some funding for a food bank and we asked for enough money to keep the food bank going through September, but with generous donations from the public, we're probably going to be able to keep it going much longer than that. So yeah, set up an account with Fairway and we're able to generate some extra revenue for our local business as well. There's going to be lots of public hearing policies that have to be passed as with any federal aid, so we'll be dealing with that for a couple of months.
Yeah, and and so great work, Chelsea, and that's awesome. I did just want to call that out because Des Moines had a meeting last night and relatively contentious on on their handling of it and lack of transparency and I'm not worried at all that we would replicate any of that, but just make sure to see if there's some lessons on restaurant inclusion and some of that stuff on where they took some missteps and some some sideways the things to try and avoid with that.
I think it's unbelievable and the fact that we had our ear to the ground listening for the opportunity, whoever may be, it's collaborative. It's everybody's, you know, we're only as strong as our weakest link, right? So it's it's great that you had an ear to the ground and we were able to understand what it took to get these funds and it's exciting to help people in this fashion because we always, we don't always get to and I think it's fantastic. So nice work.
And I think the other, just the important piece to this, and I already mentioned her, but I'm going to mention her again, but is the important piece of Dixie Beckwith and and the group up there at the Methodist Church who really this was a kind of just something that was in the parking lot for a while and has grown into almost a full time job for some of those. Had it not been being run as well as it had, I don't know that we would have, you know, been as interested in in getting as involved as we did. So such majorly kudos and and props to those people up there who've been running that day in and day out, providing to those people in need. I just, I can't speak enough about them. So like Chelsea said, now the work begins. So you'll be seeing policies and all this other stuff coming out along those lines. Um, a couple of quick things on my part. Yes, the farmer's market's starting back up, so that's cool. That's awesome. I know there's precautions and it won't look the same by any means, but it's cool to see that coming back out, especially with hopefully some farm fresh products that'll be coming out. I did have somebody contact me over the weekend regarding the street repairs and wanted to make sure that I passed on the appreciation for the extra adder that we did for Broadway, for East Broadway last week last Monday at this time and just wanted to make sure that I passed on his sincere appreciation for what we did down there, apparently that's been been really nice. And actually, he just went on to say how how nice it was all all around town. And you know, again, I know that we're in some tough times and Chief Zipker, I'm going to lean back on you here real quick. So a week or two ago, I was contacted by one resident who, you know, obviously with the events in Minnesota and some of the other unfortunate events that occurred around the country led to some interesting conversations, you know, particularly around our police department, but just just policing as a whole and was contacted by a person in town who was not calling to complain about our police department, was not calling to stir the pot, but was calling really just to ask a couple of questions. And it turned out to be a one of the best forty five minutes that I think I've spent on the phone in a long time. I learned a lot from this person. It's been some self reflection on my own part, quite honestly, just after talking to her. And and so I encouraged her to reach out to to Chief Zipker, which they shared contact information and and Chief, I know you met with her and, you know, I'm not, I guess I don't necessarily want to go public with her name, but I you and I spoke after the fact and I just you and I spoke after the fact and I just think that it's really important in the time that we're in that, that some of maybe the positive comments that you may want to say that you and I spoke to afterwards. I, I just very appreciative of your leadership and what, what you were able to offer back to her as well.
Well, thank you. It was a really good conversation and I definitely learned a lot as well. She had a lot of good material to provide to me that I can provide to my people. It'll be nice going forward.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, and I, again, I appreciate you taking the time and I'm hopeful that there's going to be more that's going to come from that even from a, a public outreach, so. Entire team right now, so, but thanks for that. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I did think it was important after this last week. Yep. Anyway, that's all I have. I'm, unless anybody else has anything else, we'll
I missed something earlier, Jason.
Yeah.
Bring up and, and listen to Jeff speak reminded me of it. And driving by some of our new developments, we talked about stormwater runoff and some new ordinances for it. If you notice one of our new ones out there, it's Bear Clay up on a hill where the most water runoff will occur. And that's going to add costs to cities, so I think we need to get started on revisiting that ordinance and getting some control over that. Because there was truckloads of black dirt that were taken out out there and moved at the very least and it will control our runoff and help all around. And so that's something I think we need to look at other communities, what they're doing and, and move forward with it sooner rather than later.
Thanks, Ron. Yep. All right, need a motion to, no, we're going to close session under Code of Iowa, chapter 21. Official meetings open to the meeting or open to the public, section five, closed session to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate property. Need a motion to go into closed session, please.
For moved.
Second. Roll call.
DeVoreck? Anderson?
Yes.
Eric Chat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
We're going to go into closed session and so I think all we need, Chelsea, would be elected officials, Amy and you, is that about right? And Jenny, sorry? Cool. All right, so everybody else can drop off.